Barbara Barosa.
James Meyer.
Aziz Anson.
Norma Franco.
Tara Franco.
Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our meeting next month will be Tuesday, March 11th. You do not have minutes to approve tonight. I'll get them out to everybody shortly, but I just haven't even had a chance to review them. Just a reminder for any of you folks, if you get scheduled for a public hearing for next month, in the event that it snows that day and town hall is closed, the meeting will just be canceled. It will not be postponed. And then you'll have to change your signs, but you will be then scheduled to just come first on the agenda for April, okay? All right, with that being said...
Do you want your remarks?
Okay. Start with the public hearing, Appeal 3661 Rebel. Michelle Rebel, 40 Warren Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit to have an in-home business, a single-sink beauty salon pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Hi, good evening. Okay, so we've had a conversation, we've reviewed your request. You are looking to operate a single-sink beauty salon, no employees, at most probably one client, maybe two, maybe one waiting, but very sporadic, not with a regular course of business or anything like that, within your home. And I think we pretty much went through, there was not going to be any sign at the end of your driveway or anything like that. Any questions or comments from board members?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Anything else you'd like to offer? No? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Michelle Rebel, 40 Warren Drive, requesting a special permit to have an in-home business, a single-sink beauty salon? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And...
You want to go?
Oh, okay.
He's a door. He's skipping right over there.
All right.
I'm ready.
This is Appeal number 3661. Michelle Rebel is the applicant. The project is a special permit to allow an in-home business, a single-sink beauty salon pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance located at 40 Warren Drive, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Barbara Barosa. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a special permit to allow an in-home business, a single-sink beauty salon pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under Secra and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on January 29th, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals had a public hearing on February 11th, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the special permit will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the requested variance is not substantial, and the proposed special permit will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by Michelle Rebel, 40 Warren Drive, Hopewell Junction, for a special permit to have an in-home business, a single-sink beauty salon pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Can I just say something?
Oh.
Sorry, on the third, fourth one down, the request of variance is not substantial, it's not a variance.
Nope.
Okay, that's fine.
She's telling second.
As amended.
As amended, right.
And aye.
Okay, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Okay, you're also... Just got to sat down again. Pam? My holder doesn't have any other resolutions. Yeah. Let's see. We'll deal with it, don't worry.
It's hard.
Appeal 3662 Rao, Lisa and Christopher Rao. Thank you. 98 Spyglass Hill, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed six-foot-by-six-foot addition for an elevator to be installed in their home pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Motion to open the public...
Thank you, do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm getting there. All right, again, we reviewed this at our last meeting. Subsequent to your moving into this house, a member of your household suffered a disability and requires, to be able to get on any floor other than your main floor, requires an elevator. And the best location for this is on the side yard, on the opposite side of the house from where your driveway is. And because of the size of, and the mechanicals of the elevator, it does require going into the side yard setback. You have said that you will finish the addition to your house as inconsistent with what the rest of your house looks like.
Correct.
So it will not stick out, you know, there's not going to be any entrance from there to the exterior, you know, but it's just, that's just the best layout within the house to be able to have this person within your home be able to maneuver. Any else you'd like to offer?
No, just that I have spoken to both neighbors on both sides.
Okay, good.
And I have emails from them saying, you know, whatever we need to do is fine.
Okay.
You know, we assure them that it's going to match the house, we'll put landscaping around it and it will look...
Did you happen to print out the emails and bring them with you?
Oh, good, okay.
I have. It's actually the email from the neighbor that's its most affecting, honestly.
That would be good.
Yeah, because I would just like to read them into the record, just...
And I also...
Chair.
This is some of the paperwork. It's the actual what the elevator is going to...
Oh, good, okay.
All the, what the contractor is going to do as far as the, everything matching, the house and...
Got it, because we...
And then the emails.
One of the questions that we did have was, where were the mechanicals of it? Were they underneath? Were they on top?
They're all enclosed within the box.
Okay.
I think that should answer any questions.
Okay, so what do you guys want to know?
I have other copies, I don't know if you just want that one.
We need one for the file, that's the important thing.
And the email, I think, is the last page.
So it is a three-story elevator, it will go up from the basement up to the second story.
Basement, our main floor, and then our top.
Right. Vinyl siding, roof shingles, so it doesn't mention a color. Okay, and here's the email that you mentioned.
I don't remember.
I know, I'm just trying to... Her name is Sue. Do you have a last name or the address?
Sure, Rooney, and they're at 108 Spyglass.
Okay.
R-O-O-N-E-Y.
Okay, so we do have an email here dated January 20th, 2014. "Hi Lisa, thanks for the email, we received the notice on Saturday, we hope your project makes life easier for Chris and your family. I know you have a strong support network of friends and family. If you are ever in a pinch, you're welcome to call them." Okay, so you, and, there's some personal information here, kids' names and things like that, so I don't want, I'm not going to read that out loud. But clearly the email from you and your husband to the family next door was that you had applied for a variance to install an elevator due to a member of your household's health issues. The current setup chairlift is not effective and quite dangerous, the structure would be enclosed and covered with the same vinyl siding as the rest of the house. You will be getting notice from the town shortly. If you have any questions, please feel free to call us." All right, so that is an email that was sent on January 19th, they received a reply the next morning, so, all right. Again, because there's some personal information, including cellphone numbers and children's names, I'm going to ask you to take this, we're just going to note for the record that we reviewed it, okay? And this is the rest of the package, if anybody else wants to look at that, and then we'll pass it on to Pam. All right, so any questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
All right, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Lisa and Christopher Rao, 98 Spyglass Hill, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a six-foot-by-six-foot addition for an elevator? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Just one question though, didn't we, I don't know if we went over it too quickly, but we did discuss whether some other means, such as a chair along the stairs could be used, was that mentioned this evening?
Yeah, she, there's actually a chairlift that's already in use, and in her email she comments that it's not working well and it's at times dangerous because there's nothing at the other end necessarily for...
And I have the lift him to put him on there.
Okay, just for that part, where there's not another possibility to accomplish it, okay?
So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jimmy, you want to go with this?
You can do it.
Tara, you want to go?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appeal number 3662, applicant is Lisa and Christopher Rao. It's a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed six-by-six addition at 98 Spyglass Hill Road. Tax map number 655801234560. Zoning district is R1. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a five-foot variance for a proposed six-by-six addition in order to have an elevator installed. Whereas this action is a type-two action under Secra and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on January 29th, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on February 11th, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant needs the elevator to be placed in the location because of the water and electric lines. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood as the applicant has said that she will have the elevator finished in the same color as the existing dwelling, the roof will tie into the existing roof line, and she will plant evergreen trees to shield it from the road and neighbors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by Lisa and Christopher Rao, 98 Spyglass Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, who are requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed six-by-six addition in order to have an elevator installed at their home pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, please pass this down to Pam.
Second, second.
Aziz.
Thank you.
All right, item number three, Appeal 3663 Ryder, Tammy Ryder for McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 26-foot rearline variance for a proposed attached addition and a two-story attached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right, so we reviewed this last month as well. And, sorry, I'm just getting your application out. One of the things that we made sure we covered was the notice appropriately covered the second story as well. Okay. So just given the nature of your property, this is where the addition need the most sense. Just trying to reorient myself here. Okay, um, yeah, this is the one where we, there's no aerial or anything with it. All right, the addition's going to be finished similar to what the exterior of your home is now, okay? So it's going to match the existing of what's there. I don't know that we had any comments or concerns on this, or that there was any other alternative for it. All right, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm fine.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request, the appeal from Tammy Ryder for McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 26-foot rearline variance for a proposed addition, including a two-story attached garage? No, seeing none? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, sorry. We didn't open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Sorry, thank you. Just, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jimmy, you want to go?
Why are you the door today? I think you got a responsibility here.
Okay, this is Appeal number 3663. Applicant is requesting a 26-foot rearline variance for a proposed attached addition and a two-story attached garage at 4 McEwen Terrace. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a 20-foot rearline variance for a proposed addition and a two-story attached garage. Whereas this action is a type-two action under Secra and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on January 29th, 2014. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals had a, held a public hearing on February 11th, 2014. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant has a corner lot and therefore needs three 50-foot setbacks, two of them being from the roads. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood as the applicant will finish the garage and the addition in the same color as the house and landscape it appropriately. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by Tammy Ryder for McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, who is requesting a 20-foot, six-foot rearline variance for a proposed attached addition and a two-foot, two-story attached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, thank you. Yes, let Pam just in case. Okay, item number four is actually not going to be heard again this evening, we have approved the request to postpone this until the March meeting.
Do you want to, because this has been...
No, there's actually, I'll give you a little bit more information on this because I was updated that they have approached, apparently there is a little bit of town land next to this, and so they are in discussion with the town about potentially purchasing some land to be able to make this a conforming lot, in which case it was all the way altogether. So in the meantime, we'll give them the courtesy of one more month to see if they can make it work.
One.
All right, so the last is, we have a review, this is not a public hearing for this one, but we have a review for Appeal 3664, Putnam County National Bank, by Daniels, Porco and Lucardi, LLP. Putnam County National Bank, by Daniels, Porco and Lucardi, LLP, are requesting an interpretation as to whether the structure located at 14 Milltown Road, Holmes, New York, is a pre-existing non-conforming four-family residence, or alternatively for approval to use the property as a four-family residence pursuant to Sections 194-120 and 194-6F respectively. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lucardi, partner with the firm Daniels, Porco and Lucardi, who represent Putnam County National Bank in this application. Before I start, I would like to make an additional submission to the board of some additional documents if I may.
Aye, Chair.
Thank you. All right, you want to take us through your application?
Sure. The submission I just provided to the board contains a couple of additional affidavits from neighbors, and also some documents that were provided to the bank by the building department in the past. This property was a property that was mortgaged to the bank by an entity on the 14 Milltown Road. The bank had a mortgage on the property, the mortgage ultimately went to foreclosure. We foreclosed on it, the bank purchased it, it was foreclosure action. At the time it made the loan, it had, of course, the municipal searches and found that the property was pre-existing non-conforming use.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
The bank found that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use by way of a municipal search.
The bank found that? I'm sorry.
Well, through their title search.
Okay.
Municipal search. Municipal search through the title company, that it was a pre-existing building and having been built prior to zoning going into effect in the town in 1963. I believe the building was built 1960. And it was built, as far as we can determine, as a four-family. I think the layout of the house is pretty clearly a four-family house, and that's the way it was used throughout, up until the present, basically. The bank had some work done to the property after it took it back, and permits and so forth were issued, and at that time, we received further representations from the town building department that this was in fact a four-family, pre-existing, non-conforming building. Subsequently, we understand there was some question raised about this property by the building department, and so we went out and performed additional investigation with regard to its pre-existing, non-conforming status. And we obtained the affidavits that we have given to the board from people who've lived in the neighborhood, many of whom have lived there since the 50s, and who can say that this was a four-family house as long as they can remember. So we're asking the board to confirm that it is a pre-existing, non-conforming, four-family house so that we can now proceed to sell it, free of any cloud as to its status. Should the board not determine that it's a pre-existing four-family, we have an alternative application, and that is under the section of the town code dealing with properties that are located in multiple zoning districts. And in that regard, this property sits on a lot which is located in a, along Route 52 at the intersection of Milltown Road and 52. The part of the lot fronting on Route 52, and also the beginning part of Milltown Road is B1, and the part toward the rear of the property is R3. The house is sitting just over the zoning line into the R3 district. It is, the line is just a matter of feet from the house. So under, under the business zoning, a multifamily dwelling would certainly be a permitted use. So as a matter of just a few feet from the line, considering the nature of the neighborhood and the standards under the town code for determining this issue, we believe there's a compelling case that even should you determine that this is not a pre-existing four-family, that it should be given status as a use that would be permitted in a business district, and extending that business district...
It's not. Well, let's let him finish. Well, multifamily dwellings are only permitted in the CRD district. Let's let him finish.
And, well, we disagree. And permitting a business use for this property as a property that is located in two zoning districts and extending the business use to the location of the house, which is literally just about a 50-foot difference. This property is located on Milltown Road and Route 52. The house draws its access from Milltown Road, so it would not have, you would not have to travel through the business district portion of the property to access the house. You can access it directly from Milltown Road. Directly across the street of Milltown Road from this house is a cemetery, and to the left of that toward Route 52 is a strip mall. So a multifamily dwelling would certainly not be out of character with the neighborhood and would be consistent with the other uses in the immediate vicinity. The portion of the property, I should mention, that is in the business district is vacant, it's just a vacant lot at the present time, and we don't propose any uses for that property. We just simply want to sell this building as a four-family house. Thank you.
Okay, so the house itself is not in the B1 district, it's in the R3 district?
Correct.
Okay, and as is frankly most of the 1.2 acre lot?
Well, I disagree. The lot is a, we provided you with a, an aerial of the property.
Right.
If you did, the lot is a very odd-shaped, L-shaped, and so the bottom part of the L would be, you know, as if you had flipped the L over, the bottom part of the L is the farthest part of the property from Route 52. And again, it's, you know, it's just eyeballing it basically, and I guess people might differ about this, but when you look at the, when you look at the zoning map, the B1 zoning line comes to, comes to the, the line of the L, top of the L, here, and it sort of curves down a bit, and I think we estimated, I don't know if this was on the copy that we provided you, but we've estimated that the line is right about here for the B1 district.
Right.
So I wouldn't say, I would say it's probably an equal split when you look at the actual lot area of both parts of the property.
Without acreage or square footage, I wouldn't want to argue with it. So let's just determine a couple of things about this house. When was this house built?
The determination that we have is around 1961, 6061, and that seems to be confirmed. We did provide you with an assessor's card which indicates 1961. We believe it's in that range. And the affidavits that we provided indicate that it has always been a four-family since then.
Mr. Lucardi, is the bank under contract to sell us now, or are you trying to clean it up to sell?
No, we had a, we had a proposed contract, but because of this issue, the contract fell through.
Okay.
There was no contract at the moment.
Let's cover a couple of other things here first. Square footage of the house is approximately 2,100 square feet?
We have the, I believe that's about right. It's a fairly large house, I've been through it, and it may actually be even a little larger than that.
The assessor's card says 2,170. 2,170 feet, so if we divide that by four, that's telling me that each apartment is approximately 575 square feet? That's not very large.
I've been through this house personally, each one of these apartments is large. I, we have the assessor's card that we provided to you that has the lot area, but I have to tell you, and we have photographs of the house and the apartments in the house that were provided to the board. Give me one second, I'll see if I can confirm the square footage from the submission.
All right, I see on this page, I'm seeing 2,170, so, of the information that you provided. All right, is the house occupied?
Presently, no.
Okay, how long has it been vacant?
I don't know.
Okay, has it been vacant for more than a year?
I don't know. I don't know.
How long has the bank gone?
It was in a foreclosure, and we didn't have control of the property because it was in foreclosure.
When did you get, when did you get control of the property?
Probably, I would say, five months ago, something like that, six months ago.
That doesn't make much sense because the report, which I understand was somebody who was under contract to purchase the property, the report you have from the building department is dated May. So if you were under contract back in May, that's more, certainly more than five months.
All right, well, again, I, you know, you're asking off the top of my head.
Was the apartment, was the home vacant at this time? What I'm trying to establish is even if it was.
I understand whether it was.
A four-family use, the fact that it's been vacant for more than a year.
Well.
Would negate that, any grandfathering of that.
The, I can't tell you honestly when the house was vacant, but it is vacant now.
But you, so you can't establish the last occupancy, so.
Sometime, no, I can't.
You do understand that you do have a statement from somebody in the building department, and the information that's referenced on here is because this is what she was told by the person based on, that she was meeting at the site.
Yeah.
Mary Ashley, if you don't mind, we'll ask you to state the circumstances, that your record.
It's true. I met the gentleman sitting back there along with this, I thought it was Phil Montana, but it may have been his son. And I was represented by the bank that the way that it was situated that day is the way it always was. And I looked at the windows and all of everything, looked to be about the same timeframe, so I wrote this up.
Okay.
Then the man that was in contract with the bank, who was not this Phil Montana, wanted the assessor to change her card, and that's when we looked at the assessor's card, and it clearly showed that it was not a four-family.
Right.
And at that point, the town told them that we were not accepted as four-family.
And so when the town did a revaluation of all properties a couple of years ago, the owner of the house at that time would have had the ability to challenge the town's record that this is in fact a single-family house, and that wasn't done at that time. So again, it may have been used as something other than a single-family house, but the square footage doesn't indicate it should be more than a single-family house? I mean, perhaps, again, in accordance with today's code, we could allow a single-family house with an accessory apartment. However, the town's rule requires, the town's law requires that one of, the owner must occupy one of those apartments. So my sense is at best, we could get this to be a single-family house with an accessory apartment.
The house is 4,140 square feet.
What?
Yeah. It is much, much more than 2,000 square feet. And it, and it, we, again, I don't know where you got the 2,000.
Two floors.
Two floors.
I think that's what my, my question is, is that, or thought was, that the 2,100 is just the top level. But begs the question, when I'm looking at these meters and the pictures of the panels as to when they were installed and what work was done on this later on, some, I don't know whether we'd have to go by, go by and do a site inspection, but I don't know if they look to me like they go back to 1961.
Well, again, we have affidavits, in fact, one of the, one of the people who provided us with an affidavit is here this evening. I mean, we're not, I, you know, I, I don't understand, you know, we're here in good faith, we're not here to trick anybody. We're here because when we made the loan for this building back in 2003, it was a multifamily house. And there was a letter from the building department at that time, we provided it to you, saying this was a pre-existing, non-conforming building. It doesn't necessarily say that it's a four-family, but it clearly is a building that was built before zoning. And we have letters and affidavits from people, and again, one of them is here this evening, if you care to hear from her, saying that this building was built as a four-family prior to zoning. Again, I, you know, I, I hope you understand we're here in good faith.
There is a note on the assessor's card from whoever owned or lived there in 1971. It's pretty faded on here. It says it is a one-family, 500 square foot apartment in the basement.
Yeah, 500 square foot basement. Also, I.
But it also says, down below, it says unfinished.
Rear portion of house unfinished.
Rear portion, right.
It says on the assessor's card, upstairs, office, two apartments, downstairs.
But the assessor's office doesn't look to see whether it's been approved. At some point after 960, 1960, this place could have been changed.
It says three.
And they would, you know, the assessor's office doesn't look to see whether there's COs or anything on work that's been done. They go out and they look at the property and figure out what the assessment is and what's sitting there. So, but even that seems to indicate that it wasn't a four-family, though, in '06. Even if you argue with that, it says upstairs office. It doesn't say two residences upstairs, it says upstairs office, down two apartments. So that's against the fact you're arguing with that it's a four-family. I don't know what it says above that.
It says only three kitchens. It doesn't say four. Crossed out too.
So, I mean, was work going on inside and never been anything being said to the town? I guess there's a question.
I don't believe there are any building permits on this property at all.
It says remodeled in 1972.
I don't see how we can come to the conclusion this should be a four-family. The zoning allows single-family, we could go to single-family with an accessory apartment, but I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm just not seeing it. Mary, there's a report, it says building records. And in the middle here, there's a diagram, and it talks, it says number of units, and it looks like it says RPT? I'm not sure. For May 76.
RP, RP's are all porch-type things.
Right.
So I don't know.
It says number unit, N-O period units.
What page of this are you on?
H4.
The other, the other diagram. Oh, RP, okay.
Because I'm trying to get, what does that mean? In seven, in May of 1976, what does RPT mean?
Report?
It must be RP.
Or RDT, I don't know.
Either an old porch or an enclosed porch is added.
Oh, okay, all right. But this looks like it's 2,170 and 1BFR, 1SBFR.
Four, May 4th, 1976.
Right, so that's why, again, we're looking at, we're looking at the documentation that exists in 1976, this looks like it was one unit, one space. I don't see walls up here, I don't see anything.
They, they only do the outline of a building.
Oh, okay, all right. But what does 1BFR mean?
One B.
1SBFR, I'm not sure. In the middle of the diagram.
Yeah, I don't know really what that means.
It also says at that time it had three bathrooms, which is impossible if there's four families.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of discrepancy here.
She says six total rooms, two bedrooms.
Six rooms, two bedrooms. Right.
Yeah.
But it does say two dwellings above that.
No, 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 no. Vacant lot, dwelling or other.
Oh, okay.
So they're just circling that it is a dwelling. It's not, they're not, it's not saying two dwelling. So, again, I'm begging to differ with you on the documentation here that says it's been a four-family house since it was built.
Well, once again, we have, we have affidavits from people who've lived in the neighborhood since the 1950s who are saying that that was the use of the property since that period of time. To the extent there may be a difference between what they've observed and what may be on an assessor's card, I can't explain that. But these are not people who are associated with the bank, they are just residents in the neighborhood with no interest in this matter. Except perhaps for Ms. Clement, who's the real estate broker in the transaction. Other than her, none of them have any interest in this matter.
But again, I do go back to the fact that this house is vacant, it has been vacant for some amount of time, so really, even if there was something that was in place and you had made the petition while it was still inhabited, I think it'd be a different story. The house is vacant. So I truly believe that any potential grandfathering is gone. All right, and bottom line is, the neighbors in this area are entitled to having the house and property function as it should. Now, you have the opportunity to go to the town board and have this rezoned, but can we have the discussion about the B1?
Well, four-family is not a.
Four-family is, right, wouldn't be allowed anyway.
Right.
So.
My, my reading of the B1 district zoning is that multifamily is permitted.
I don't know where you're reading that, sir, but if you look in the, in the schedule of permitted uses, multifamily dwellings is only permitted in a CRD zone. Where are you reading that it is permitted?
I'm reading it from the schedule of uses. I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but, or I did, but I don't have it with me, but I.
I have my zoning book right here, if you'd like to.
I'd be happy to, if I could.
Okay, so I think we're going to need some direction from you, Mr. Lozardi, on how you'd like us to proceed.
Well, if I may, if we could be put over to the next date, I would like to come back then and present further evidence with respect to this matter. And perhaps we could address the others on the issue in alternative ways as well.
Okay.
Are there any documentation from any of the previous tenants or someplace that shows there's been four different families living there?
We could.
If it's a four, four-unit use?
From the former families that lived there? If we could find them.
Or any kind of, I mean, not, I mean, for example, they may be collecting rent, I mean, I don't even know what the situation is. Some kind of an evidence to show that there were four different, separate entities living there for the last X amount of years?
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can try and track them down, but.
Maybe bank records showing it or some, some evidence.
And Putnam Bank gave its mortgage when?
2002 or something.
I think it was 2003, if I'm correct.
They have copies of the E&amp;A or any other forms that were filed indicating as what the status of their property was at that point?
Well, when they, when they gave the loan, they, they went through the building and observed its use at that time.
And that's what I'm asking. You know what an E&amp;A form is, an equalization assessment form?
Sure.
Typically gets checked off one- or two-family residential. Was somebody else checked off at that point?
Or it says multifamily commercials, you're right. But the question is whether or not they did a deed at the time, if they wanted to refinance it, they wouldn't have done the E&amp;A at the time, or something.
So they just did a ref, we don't know what.
Mr. Lozardi, did he refill the loan with you or was it?
I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was an original purchase loan or if it was just a refinancing, I could, I could find that out.
The deed date is 8/27/03 on this assessment form, which I presume that it was a, it's interesting.
Jim, let me call your attention to the sheet that you're looking at.
Yeah.
When do you think the bank took over this property?
I believe it was 2003.
No, no, not when it was your mortgage. When did you foreclose on the property?
You asked me that question before.
I know, that's why I.
And I, I estimated six months and you disagreed, so I.
Well, according to the town's record.
I can get that, I can get that date for you, but I don't have it now.
According to the town's record, the bank took it over August 29, 2012.
Okay.
All right, so again, if you took it over and it was vacant, it's been, it's been vacant for more than a year.
One of the things that might be helpful to us, if the bank gave a mortgage back whenever they had an appraisal done by the bank appraisal, which is usually a multi-page document describing the rooms in detail, the floors in detail, so maybe we could find the appraisal from when the bank gave the loan that would set some light on the use as of the loan application and the closing of the loan.
But that's still legal, legally, or that they had permits to do what they did.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't mean it was a legal use of the.
No, no, but it would help us, so if someone walked through and someone swears, on the first floor, I saw this, on the second floor, I saw this, I saw this entranceway, I think it would be a helpful document.
But John, even still, the, again, the building's been vacant.
Yeah.
So any prior, prior use is.
So people are talking about what the use was at a given time, I think the appraisal would shed light on it.
I think for our purposes, he's asking for an interpretation of what is the allowed use of that property at this time? So I think we could need to stick with the facts of what.
Because I'm trying to rack my brain, it's not coming to me. I mean, the land use is specified as 210 or more.
Right.
210, I think, is a one- or two-family residential.
One family.
One family.
One family.
So, I mean, if it's, if the deed's going down and being transferred, and the bank allowed it to go down as a recording, I think the bank can't now come in and say, oh, we didn't mean it was a 210. I mean, they allowed it to be processed as, under the equalization assessment forms reporting to the government as land use 210, then I think they're stuck with that. Regardless of anything else, the chair is making a very good argument, but we could be, get here back and forth as to whether or not, you know, the assessor's record that the bank has, it just goes back to when the bank started paying the taxes as opposed to actual legal ownership. I mean, we can get that deed when the referee's sale actually took place, because even while it was in foreclosure, I guess we have a question of whether the bank was an owner or not. But if, if they're allowing this property to be transferred under a use of single-family residence, and that's how the deed was recorded, and that's how all the documents went through, I don't think in good faith the bank can come now and argue it's a four-family residential.
Well, we'll be happy to take a look at, if we can find the, the real property, the real property form, the 5217 form from back in 2003. If we have it, you know, we'll come back and we'll produce it. But I would like an opportunity at least to come back and address the concerns that have been raised this evening, at an adjourned date.
Just one last thing before we have you come back next month. You have a letter included in your package dated October 27, 2003, from John Newbauer, our former building and zoning administrator, regarding certificates of occupancy. Certificates of occupancy in the town of East Fishkill have been required of all one-family dwellings constructed after 1963, again, it was built prior, so be it, when zoning regulations were enacted by the town board. For one-family dwellings constructed prior to 1963, no COs are issued. Our information is that the above-entitled party having a structure on the above-entitled property in the town of East Fishkill was constructed prior to 1963. Accordingly, we have no CO on file. This is all totally referencing single-family.
Yeah, which is my point, under the land use code.
You've got a lot of, you've got to provide us a lot more information to work with.
Okay.
All right?
We'll, we'll, we'll be back next, next month or whenever your next meeting is, and we'll produce whatever additional evidence we have.
Okay.
Are we going to put this on for a meeting, that?
No, no, this needs more review, because we're not, we're not sure what he's actually asking for at this. Right now, we're dealing with an interpretation, but he says he has an alternate request if the interpretation is not successful to.
I understand that, back to your, you know, I'm a little more like, just deal with it.
Well, the alternate request is to approve the use as a four-family residence.
The alternate request is what?
It's on here, is alternatively for approval to use the property as a four-family residence.
Right.
Which is not permitted in zones.
Right, as, as we've said, probably the best we could allow is a single-family residence with an accessory apartment. That's what the regulations would currently allow, if the owner of the property resided in one of those units. All right, that's the conditions under which an accessory apartment would be allowed.
All right, so we'll, we'll be back next month and thank you for, for your review tonight.
Thank you.
We need a formal motion, no, right?
No, nothing.
I mean, a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. All in favor? Bye. Thank you, everyone.